Again, do you would like to call the meeting to order? This, of course, is the, uh, a special meeting of the Bedford Bay Recreation District Board of Trustees, uh, January sixth at nine AM. Um, I'd like to welcome everyone. Um, we'll first, uh, be, uh, first stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the right of an American citizen, a Republican, a Christian, a liberal, and a reasonable, democratic, and just as a rule.
Thank you. Uh, please, uh, make sure your phones are off, uh, if you have them with you. Uh, and we'd like, again, to welcome everyone. Happy New Year. I hope everyone had a good holiday and a good time off. Uh, could we please have the roll of comments?
Mr. Minchin.
Here.
Mr. Grunon, present. Mr. Morrissey.
Present.
Mr. Amos.
Present.
Chairman Lina.
Present.
We also have with us John Coffey, our community manager, Stephanie Brown, our district clerk, uh, John Carey, our new counsel. In the audience, I noticed HB, our trustee-elect, Mackenzie Leva, our systems analyst, and I see Ernie from the golf course. We have our Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, and, of course, we have a special meeting, as we said, today. Um, one thing I'm, I'm not going to add anything to the agenda because we want to keep this as short as possible. What I did say, though, a number of times, and I think I put it in the tabler, is that we would allow, uh, audience participation prior to having any kind of presentation. We don't want to keep people out. So, we will have audience participation if anyone wishes to get up and say anything. Chair, Mr. Wheaton? Come on. And please state your name and your address.
Uh, I've observed Mr. Jones, uh, working out here on the golf course, and I admire his work ethic and his professional drive, and I have every confidence that he is going to be able to get the golf course to where it belongs. He has a huge task ahead of him to fix the damage that's been caused to the greens from killing the weeds. In April four years ago, our decision not to be aggressive with the weeds has caused this. When I was asked, what do you want me to do? Spend a lot of money on expensive chemicals? Well, we got to do it anyway, just three and a half years later. This has caused a lot of expense, a lot of time, and a lot of energy for Mr. Jones to get the job done. Mr. Jones has to help the support of ABM and not be hindered by poor decisions by the staff and the Board of Trustees from their plan. I hope you all support him, and if, at any time we see that there's no support for Mr. Jones, whether it's staff, or the chemicals, or whatever he needs to get this course to where it belongs, we should go out and try to get a new company. This has nothing to do with Mr. Jones, because I think he could be absolutely successful if he gets the support and backing that he needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I didn't press the issue. Okay. Coach, thank you. Okay. As we said, um, today is a, a presentation. We've had a lot of discussion about the golf course lately, and, uh, of course, we do have Mr. Jones. Rick Jones is the new course superintendent hired by ABM. Uh, as you all know, we, we, uh, lost two course superintendents, then we lost the district manager, and, and there was a little bit, um, turmoil there as to who was running or who, what decisions were being made, and what the philosophy was going to be, and what direction we were going to go in. And so, Mr. Jones has been, he's been here for a few months, and, um, he now is just recently appointed as their course superintendent. Um, and I also supported him and told him, I hoped he got the job, uh, a few month, a month or so ago. Um, so, we actually have just a presentation, comments, questions, whatever. Rick, uh, we'd like you to come up and, um, come to the podium and, and tell us what, a number of things. You can tell us how you'd like to go. Uh, we would like to know what, we will have a lot of questions, probably, but we would like to know what direction you think we should go on the course, um, what some of the problem areas are, how you think you can handle them, which you can fix them, whatever it is. I mean, it's just kind of a back and forth between you and the Board of Trustees. And, and if you have to have that little green light on in your mics so you can hear, okay?
Sounds good. Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you.
So, welcome. By the way, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, board. Uh, it's glad to be here. Uh, like Mr. Mano said, uh, it's, it's been a blessing in disguise since I've been on property and seen where it was, to see where it is at now, and see where it's going to go. I have, as previous people have said, I have every confidence in the ability of my ability, the resources at hand, staff, to be able to get the job done. And some of the things that, that we're looking to talk about here is, the number one thing is you have the greens, tees, fairways, uh, bunkers, some of the rough, and then also a lot of your miscellaneous landscape, uh, stuff around the rest of the property. Sixty-five acres, you have forty that's playable, twenty-five that's just basically common grounds landscape, stuff like that. Uh, some of, just, and, as to be real brief, and if you could click to the next one, as going to the gr- as going to the greens, and what I have planned there is, as you can see, our promise at ABM Golf and Turf Services is exceptional and consistent service, serving our clients well, taking care of our team, and we care for the people. Greens, fairways, tees, bunkers, and everything that goes in. Bottom line is, is what's important to you is important to me is important to ABM. I can't speak for past leadership, or what has gone on here in the past or anything. All I can speak for is what I bring to the table in my experience, and everywhere I've been, I've been successful. Came down here fifteen hundred miles, and I don't plan to fail down here. What you guys all have here is a gold mine. It just takes the right person to see it as a gold mine. You've seen the course where it's gone up, you've seen the course where it's gone down, and you have no reason to believe now that the replacement of being me, that eventually it's going to go down. I'm here to tell you that that's not, I'm not here to just one-stop shop, move on to somewhere else, or I'm here to stay. I care about the course. I've been talking to some of you, some of the board members, some of the other people that have been out on the course, some of the members, and they have nothing but good things to say about it. But, again, it looks really great right now because it's, it's been overseeded, it's all green, it's all plush, everything like that. Thing that's most disparaging, or that needs to be corrected, is our greens. As stated in everything, being aggressive on getting rid of the weeds with the goosegrass up on there, that was great and all, but what it left behind is a lot of bunch of patches and everything like unevenness, which affects play when you guys are going out there enjoying your game. My job on that is to make sure that you have a smooth, level surface. So, I, as you've been seeing, I've been top dressing, putting green sand out there. As having it to be able to grow in because of the unfortunate temperatures of Mother Nature, I'm just going to have to parse the course as much as I can until we get the right temperatures in order to be, get it back and to fill the land. However, some of the renovations, if you could click to the next one, some of the renovations as just talking on, on the greens projects and outlook, uh, renovations being your usual suspects, and that's being hole thirteen. For the last six years, that backside of that green, you've never been able to play, okay? Or you've been able to play, and your hat hasn't been able to play consistently. We've tried multiple different things to make you grow grass, everything like that. So, finally, we're just going to bite, yes, bite the bullet, and going to be able to renovate that type of green, putting brand-new sod down, uh, putting down thick, uh, thirteen, hole four, bottom of sixteen, uh, there's a few other, the bottom of, the bottom of three, that's starting to develop in the high side of, in the high side of one. So, these are just some examples of what we're about to do as order and sod, and take care of that, and be able to start to renovate that. That also then takes manpower, as right now, I'm building my staff, building it to the way that it's going to be execute the vision that not only you guys have, but what Ernie has in collaboration with myself, and be able to do that and give you uniformity each and every day that you go out and play the golf course. Whether it's Monday, whether it's the weekend, she's going to play, she's going to play the same, she's going to play nice and smooth, level, everything aesthetically is going to be in its proper place. Airfying, you guys have started to see me out there, needle-tining, 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 needle-tining. And that's really the name of the game on those greens up there, is just because of the Florida muck that you guys have here. Okay? There's a thick layer that I'm trying to break through, and once I break through, you're going to start to see some of these speeds, speed up, and every, the greens speed up and everything like that. It's just a, it's just a cultural progress. That progress process will take place over the course of this year. Again, I'll continue the top dress. Once we have optimal temperatures, you're going to also start seeing me vertical cutting. Some of the cultural practices that you didn't see in the past, you're going to see now. My door is always open twenty-four seven, but if, the only thing I ask, and I ask to ask your people too, is if they have any issues or any questions or anything like that, let them address it to you guys, and you guys be the voice, so that then Ernie come, and then you voice Ernie, and then Ernie comes to me. However it needs to happen versus just all the different voices I, I'm hearing from, you know, I'm hearing this, hearing that, hearing that. I'm out there to do the scope of service, and I have every confidence in my ability that I'll be able to, within that contract, to be able to succeed, day in and day out. Uh, my work ethic, you all have seen me out there, I'm, I'm, I'm go big, go, go big, go home, okay? I, I mean, I, I wake up going a hundred miles an hour, and I end going a hundred miles an hour, and I go to work, I go to bed thinking about, okay, what can I do tomorrow to improve the course? Go to the next one, please? Next one, after, after greens. Fairways, uh, those renovations as right out there, I mean, you, whether you guys drive your car, walk the course and everything like that, renovations, what I'm talking about is filling in some of the ruts that have just, the big craters that are out there. Uh, getting some sod, get some sod. As for those little pieces, to give you an idea, you have one right here on Fairway one, you have one that's over on sixteen, and another one that's on, um, that's on fair, that's on Fairway five. So, beginning to, as to fill, as to fill in those, as to make sure that anywhere, whether it's the women's, men's, anybody, a complete snowbird that comes here to play, it plays the same uniformity in the s- in the winter as it would in the summer, as it would in the fall, as it would in the spring. One of the first things that I did is, when I came and took a look at everything, is taking a look at Google reviews. Even though a lot of people don't pay attention to them, I pay attention to myself, and the first thing they say is, oh, don't go play there on weekends, that it's very, they don't mow, they don't do anything. As you're starting to see, you're seeing us here on weekends, you're seeing us doing the mowing, you're seeing us doing some different cultural practices. Again, it just takes building the team, as I'm doing right now, in order to have the manpower to execute and do those types of things. Uh, continue to top dress and do stuff like that out on the fairway. What that's going to do is just help the overall smoothness, so it doesn't feel like I'm back in Phoenix, or Tucson, or somewhere. I close my eyes and I drive, and then I open, I'm like, okay, I'm in Florida. But when you close your eyes and you're driving, you feel like you're somewhere else, and that's just the agglation and everything else. My background being in football, base, Major League Baseball, National Football League, Major League Soccer, I had the luxury of always having a flat surface. Here in golf, you guys don't have that, we don't have that, and so, it's just, it's been an adjustment, but an adjustment that I've, uh, you know, hit the ground running and, and I'll succeed. Next one? Tees, box, uh, the tees, especially your par threes, where they're all chewed up and everything like that. What I've been starting to do right now is, is starting to top, as top dress, and continue to keep top dressing, needle-tining also those areas, and some of the side areas on your walk-ups to that, in order to help the turf to be able to repair and to be able to heal itself. The other thing that I'm doing differently is making sure that for one week, some of you guys and women have asked me, why do you have the tee boxes, the tee boxes, you know, so narrow? Well, on some of the, on some of the tees, I have a lot of room where I can use one side of the right side, let the left side heal for the week, and I switch them the next week. Some of these tees, a prime example is tee eleven. I don't have that luxury. I have small real estate, and I got to work with what I can work with. On that, the only thing that I can continue to keep doing is airfying, top dressing, uh, and, and once, and with fertilization, make sure to get any pesticides, you know, pests out, insecticides, or anything like that that's, you know, causing an ineffective turf. That is my job, that I'm committed to, to make sure that everything, again, it's all about uniformity. Next, please? Bunkers, rust, projects, outlooks. The bunkers, a- as you guys are seeing, is just really, I want a clean line. That, that clean line is, when you're in the bunker, you're standing up on a tee, you're standing on any, doesn't matter where you're at, tee box, fairway, green, you look out over the course, everything has a nice, clean line. Uh, there's no, there's no, let's just say, you know, weird, as, if you went to the barber and you had a weird hair sticking out, or, or the famous colic that we all have as we get older and everything like that, I'm not trying to have any of those stick out, and that just comes with training the team members, showing them what my, my vision is and what I want, and to go out and to do it. Uh, and that's, and then, again, properly rake in the, properly rake in the bunkers, so that you're not having any lips. It basically looks like a skateboard half-bike, nice and smooth, so that when the ball goes and roll, it rolls naturally into the bunker, and it's not stuck up on a pile of sand. Next? Miscellaneous landscapes areas, projects, outlooks, uh, those is, again, uh, tree maintenance, focal points. When you enter, just like you came to this building right here, and entered out on the outside, first thing you see is, that is the putting and chipping up there. Next thing you see is, you come around, you park the car, you check in with one of the Rangers and everything, it's that first tee box. I want to make sure that your beginning experience is just as good as your ending experience. And so, those are what I'm talking about, is being focal points. But other focal points is somewhere, as also where there's additional, uh, mulch and landscape, additional plants. Make sure everything's all squared off, trimmed up, weed-free, everything like that, so it's copacetic all the way across the board. Again, the message that you're hearing from me is about uniformity. Uh, as you guys all play golf, and I've been told this, I'm not here to pull a club out of my, out of my bag that I've never used before. I'm here to give you par. But then my par is different than your par. My par is raising the bar, okay? And in collaboration with the resources which I have, and with the t- supportive, you guys, Ernie, and along with ABM, I'm fully confident that I can execute this plan and give you the product that you've been wanting to have, but just not consistently enough. With that being said, I'd like to thank you for your time. Appreciate you all. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Rick. I really appreciate that. Yeah, but we probably do have a lot of questions. Couple of things, just to start, just to explain a couple of things.
Yeah.
When you say things like, uh, you said thirteenth green, you said put sod down, explain it, explain it to me. Is that something we can do? Is that an extra cost to us? Is that?
No, 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 no. As, as that cost right there is with it, is.
And what, what exactly would you do there?
Okay. So, to give you an, give you an example, on that tee, on that green right there, it's about a little under five hun- about a five hundred square feet, uh, what you're doing is you're going to cut it out, you're going to cut it out perfectly in square and replace all that dry area right there. What I have been doing is, like, when I go to pull plugs and everything on the edges, is trying to take those good plugs, putting them around the outside of the edges, to fill in some of those green spaces. So, basically, once that renovation is done on hole thirteen, now, instead of only being able to use half of the green for your, uh, I mean, for your, uh, hole placement, you're going to be able to use the entire green now. Brings back in the bunker play, it brings back in the water play, brings back in everything that you should be able to get as a golfer when you step up onto that tee box. Uh, and we, and the, it's, it's a simple process, it, it's simple, but it's labor-intensive. Uh, you got to s- cut it out, uh, you're going to use some ti- you're going to use some top dress, pea moss, seven, seventy-three, ninety. Uh, that way, when you go lay the sod back down and everything like that, uh, it'll naturally take, uh, it'll have nutrients already in the pea moss to help the roots grow, strengthen, spread across, so that there's no, you ain't, you ain't going to see any lines or anything like, you ain't going to see any lines or anything like that. Basically, you didn't know that it's been sod. You'll know it's been sod because now there's a green space there, but you ain't going to be able to see, you know, some, some of the lines and fringes from when you have sod, when you do sod projects and whatnot.
And, and, give me, I had three questions, so I'll, and I'll give it to the rest of the board. You, you had explained to me one time also, our putting green, of course, is, I mean, you know, I mean, it's bad, really bad.
Right.
Half, half the putting green is crabgrass, half is regular grass, and a third of it, well, no, a third, 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 and a third has no grass at all. You explained to me one time, you said something you thought you could do to that putting green.
The, the one thing that I've discussed with, is discussed with Matt, and, and I've kind of put it on the back burner because he has a different vision to go with, is his phrase, is, is phrase mowing. His cost effi- is mine is a little more expensive, and trying to get what we need machine in order to do it is just, basically, not the best, not the best practice, just because of, you're doing it in straight lines, and on fair or putting green, there's different angles and everything like that. However, you could get strips, so you could get about on there, about three straight strips, you'd just be leaving your edges and everything like that, where you phrase mow it down, you take it down to the stolons. The stolons is, uh, to you and I, to you, the average homeowner, uh, would basically be seeing dirt, but you'd be seeing little green, you'd be seeing little green plants. Uh, you aerate it, you fertilize it, uh, you crin- you can crim- uh, crimp in some more sod within to the aeration of the holes, throw a grow blanket on it, about eight weeks later, you have a brand-new head of hair, so to speak, in this case, a brand-new turf. It's what we used to do in football. Every year, the coach used to love to play on one field that was the closest to the building. That built, that football field would get destroyed the most. However, that's, we would re-sod that one, right? Brand-new sod, re-put it back in and everything else, so you couldn't see the seams or anything. But his actual best field is the one where we were able to do the cultural practices of, doing the phrase, doing the phrase mowing, and doing aerate and fertilize and put a heat, put a grow blanket on it, let the sun, natural sun, take care of it. Eight weeks later, you got a fresh head, you got a fresh head of air, you just got water, 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 water. Now, that's closed down for two months, but what you get, you keep doing that practice year in, year out, year in, year out, you have a very strong head, head hay, okay? There is no, you know, pulling it and feeling like it's, you know, it's wa- like it's waffle, and it'll just fall apart like a waffle wood, okay? A poorly bad egg, same example, poorly bad egg, you go to flip it over, it just falls apart, becomes all runny. Sod's no different, okay? Uh, it's just got to be maintained, manicured, and properly provided the cultural practices in order to strengthen its root zone.
Okay. And just couple more I have, and then, um, uh, how, the, you talked about the, the, the spot weeding and everything, and how long is it, you know, we call them landmines now because obviously you, you, you can't putt on some of that because it throws the ball away.
Correct.
How long, and I understand it's, we, we killed the weeds, we did, how long before we're going to get that back?
As to be quiet.
Does it take all the way till we get warm weather again before that will fill in?
To be, as to be honest, yes.
Okay.
The only thing that I can do is piecemeal through, as you saw with the green sand, coming over and continually keep doing that, and continually keep bringing up to surface for those potholes and everything else, so that you'll have a level putt, you'll have a level putting surface. Once the temperatures warm up, then, then I have things more in my favor that I can do.
We, we had two other discussions prior to you coming in. Um, one was with, um, I can't remember the district manager's name.
Brad. Brad, see, yeah.
And, and, you know, we had a discussion about overseeding versus not overseeding. Do you have an opinion on that, whether we should or not be overseeding?
The whole thing of it is, is.
And what happens if we don't oversee?
Okay. Uh, ha- everywhere, I mean, but everywhere I've been, we've always overseen.
I'm talking in the future, no, not this year, Rick. I'm talking in the future.
As in the future, it's all, if you have a healthy turf, you don't have to oversee. But if you have the conditions that, like what we had when I showed up on, and everything like that, you don't, you don't oversee, it's going to be worse coming out of the transition zone.
But can we make that turf that healthy that we don't have to?
You, you, you can, you can. It's, it's just a, it's just a process. Again, like I've explained to a lot of you, all it is is about following the plan. I'm not here to fall behind on the plan. If I execute the plan and everything else, and we reevaluate it come, let's say, let's say, late summer and everything like that, and see where everything's at, and you're taking, you're taking, uh, samples throughout, not only the fairway, the greens, and everything else, you really want to see where your root zone is, okay? If you got long root zones, you got a healthy turf. If you got short root zones, you don't have a healthy turf. That could take anywhere from a season to two seasons to rebound, okay? So, will you not have to oversee? That's all going to depend upon how the, the course progresses throughout the course of, you know, this, rest of this winter, spring, and then going into the summer.
And finally, for me, and then I'll turn to the rest of the board, uh, you mentioned a couple of things, and you, whatever, one of the things, you said there's a little difference of opinion about things. When we had, um, our discussions prior to you being here, there was discussion about, um, um, course superintendents coming in, and each one having their own idea of what they should do, and ABM then having another idea of what they should do, and someone, I think it was Brad, mentioned at that time that it would now be ABM's philosophy or plan, or whatever. Right now, all the things you're talking about, do you, do you feel you have support from ABM with the kinds of things you want to do here?
Yes. I totally have the confidence of that. Not only did Brad do a very good job of transitioning and introducing me to you, to you guys, but also just everything that he was executing, along with his boss, my boss, Matt Hill, as having the ABM way of the policy of do- doing it that way, I feel one hundred percent confidence in the support that I have, the resources that they're providing me, and additional resources and projects that I'm going to be able to execute throughout the course of this year.
So, you feel the plan that we have going is yours and also ABM? You're on the same page?
Correct, correct, correct.
Questions for, um, I had enough. I just have one at the moment.
Um, a few years back, we had a, I guess they call it a sod farm. Do you have any plans on putting that back in? Because, to my thinking, if we had that sod farm, then you could have been replacing all these little potholes and greens with that, and since we don't have one, then you're, you're stuck, probably not able to do it.
You're, you're exactly.
Do you have a plan for that?
You're exactly right. As I've been going around playing on other courses and everything, and seeing how, how they do it and whatnot, to give me ideas, and a- as to how can I, because that is an uphill battle, and that's a great question, Mr. Amos, is, is that we don't have a lot of real estate in order to have that. If you provide me with an area or say, hey, hey, that we can make this, I'd be more than glad to discuss with Matt and the other higher-up ABMs to be able to put something into play. Perfect place that comes in is right out here, up on the va- down the eighteenth, but that's not our land, okay? If I had a little section of that land over there that I could be able to just maintain, grow, and everything, you're exactly right, because a lot of other courses, that they have larger real estate, have more than what we have, sixty-five acres, and of the twenty-five acres that are, that are common grounds and everything else, not a lot of that is even gra- you know, to be able to pull sod from.
Well, how, how big of a spot would you need? What, what they did then is they took a back portion of their driving, uh, that were by three.
Okay.
And, I mean, it wasn't very big, but it was still, it, it was useful. But how big of a thing did?
An, an area, to give you, is an area that, that just came across my mind, is right there over here on our putting and chipping, but on the backside of four green going to the, uh, going to, uh, five tee box. That right there, you guys don't drive on, I mean, not saying you guys, but everybody in general, as golfers, they don't drive on it, they come off the green, they go right to the car path and go right over to five. And so, that's one of the things where you, you're not trying to put a fence up around or anything like that, you want to be able to come right in with the tractor, aerate, do whatever you need to do with it, versus having to go through a bunch of obstacles and everything. So, from that standpoint, having about a ten thousand square foot area to be able to do it would be great. Uh, is it, is it optimal? Uh, again, that'll be something that me, Matt, and Ernie, and as be able to discuss, as, if it is a possibility at all. But, yeah, if we had that, then, yes, some of these issues, I'm not having to piecemeal or pull a plug from a good place to put it on the out place, and then, yeah. Anybody else?
Just jump in, yeah. Just jump in, board. We're just having a discussion here, so feel free to just go back and forth.
Mr. Wheaton.
So my understanding, you're in charge of implementing the entire ABM contract?
That is correct, full scope of service.
All right. What are we planning to do with your guys' lawn bowling and also the softball field?
Good, uh, good question. Uh, the one thing of it is, as you've seen, as, one, lawn bowls come, lawn bowls come along real good right now. It'll come along even better. I've got, I'm gonna be, the obulations down there that they've had in the past to where it looked like when I first came on, to where it looks like now, is completely different. However, it's designed to look like a putting green. So I'm gonna have to roll some areas down there and continue to keep rolling, a top dressing in. But the maintenance issues of everything else, I'm mowing it three, I'm mowing it anywhere from two to three times a week based on their play and talking with a few of their members, what's the best optimal, optimal time to do so. Taking weed eating, edging, making sure everything looks all pristine. Their water issue I have, their water system I have access to, so I control that. That's why it's all green. As baseball, on the other hand, they, they have an out, they have a switch or I have other air, people that are in control of that water and I'm trying to eliminate as, as we speak. The more hands that are in the cookie jar, then it, it becomes, it becomes a crap show, so to speak, of, well, who turned it off, who did? So that's why I'm trying to 86 that, all of that. Baseball, what we did right now, they had a berm that was just atrocious from years of just hardening up, so the wind and how it's open right there, all their material blowing off, it build up, and they still have it on two of their areas where they put the chalk lines and everything else. What we did this season was we took about 10, took about eight feet of it off on the backside, gave it a bigger, so to speak, playing area infield, okay? And then next season, we're gonna take the additional areas out on the side, add back to it, whatever we need to piecemeal in with sod, we'll definitely put it all back so it's a regular spec baseball field. Right now, it's a work in progress as they okayed it, and they were okay with going with that plan. Every, all the chemicals in which I use here, that I'm spraying on your guys' greens and everything else, when I have, as I have the leftover, I have enough to go over there, spray it, to spray at the lawn bowl, to spray at the baseball field, and do everything that I need to do there. Lawn bowls come along faster than softball, and that's just because I've got more hands in the cookie jar. Once I eliminate that, it'll have it, it'll be a little bambino field over there.
Remember, I'm from Boston, so I want this to look like Fenway.
I will do my, I will do my best is to have it looking like Fenway. As, as, you know, I, I've been to Fenway, and I know exactly what you're talking about. I'm partial to Kansas City Royals because that's where I got my bones getting started. I was with the Kansas City Chiefs, Kansas City Royals, got a World Series ring with, I mean, it's, those things are just part of the job. You know, it's a bonus to be with a winning team. I don't care if they're losing, I don't care if it's the Jacksonville Jaguars. You know, I'm gonna give you the same product out there, win, lose, or draw, because that's my job. I wanna make sure aesthetically, does it look, how does it play? Cleat in, cleat out in this way, divots, all that's, you know, are we filling everything back in? Getting the guys in my team up to speed on what we want as the ABM vision to execute the scope of service and to give you guys what you've been looking for.
I live on the eighth fairway and the crabgrass got well out of hand. What's the plan for that?
As you, as you see right now, I've had, I had enough chemical to be able to, when we did the overseeding and everything, I had enough chemical to spray all the way out, all to the outside to stop it from intruding in onto the fairways. To bring up the most elephant in the room on fairway is being fairway five. That's a prime example, okay? Where you have a lot of the weeds that creeped in and are now starting to creep back out. If I annihilated them right now, they'd be all brown, and you guys don't want that. We want it green, right? Okay, we want people to continue to keep coming back, we want new business. We wanna go as like what you've been talking about, to go from the number five golf course in here to being in the upper echelon, okay? And that's, that's my job in order to get it there, okay? And I, again, that, I, I am committed to doing whatever it takes in order to, I'm competitive myself in order to get it there.
Questions, any else?
I wanna thank you for the information you've given us today, and I have full confidence that you're gonna be doing it.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Anybody else?
Yeah, a couple, a couple other things. In a, in a, in another couple of months, this grass now, the overseed is going to die out.
Correct.
Okay, and so, and so explain to us, explain to us what's going to happen? And is our course going to boom, go down again? What's gonna happen with the, and by the way, remember, you and I have talked many times, and everybody knows that if you walk off of this course and you say, wow, were those greens nice? That's what people remember.
Correct.
That's the main, number one thing.
Correct.
The greens.
Correct.
So what happens, what happens in a couple of months?
The whole thing of it is, is again, it's a, just like what you guys have, is, it's about a plan, okay? And executing that plan and staying ahead of the game. In the transition zone, when it's about to be optimal Bermuda, what you don't wanna be doing is you don't want a water log. You gotta be able to dial back and, to bring, his name up into here, Ace. Ace is always on me saying, Rick, what are you doing with water? What are you doing with water? Don't you know where you live at? It's the, you know, Florida mud, you know, you're, you're in the Florida flood zone. So I've taken that into account, but at the same point, I have a, I have a tool, a moisture tool, to be able to let me know when the greens need feeding or anything like that. And that's what I'm gauging on, on the water. Now, science and then visually seeing it and everything else, I'm also facing that Florida mud. So the whole thing of it is, the mud, and the mud layer is what you guys don't see that's below the greens and whatnot. Once we can break through that and I'm not water logging it, your transition zone is a smooth. And it'll be smooth this-
But can we do that? Can we break through that?
Yes.
That's the question.
You can break through it. It just takes the chemicals and staying on top of it and continually keep-
And you know how to do that.
And continue to keep analysis. Anything, questions that I have that I can't execute, I have full part of resource, not only ABM, but other people that are within the industry and everything else to be able to help out. And I feel 100% confident that going into the transition zone, you're not gonna have, I've seen atrocious pictures that you, that other members have shown me and showed me what things have looked like and what it's not, okay? Some of those things of whether it's, you know, not having a staff, falling on hard times. Again, I can't, I can't talk about when I wasn't here. Only can talk about what I'm gonna do and to actually keep your guys' vision, okay? And I have full confidence that within the scope of service that you've given us as ABM, that I'll complete it 110%, 110%.
And, and, and I'm glad you brought that up because if you notice, we, I, we try not to do anything about what's happened in the past here. All we wanna know is what you can do to our course and can you bring it back to a place to a, we would consider really good playable course? And, and you've given us a lot of good information and I, I really do appreciate that. Are there any other questions? Final two things, I, I, first of all, I'd like to really thank you, welcome you, I, I wish you all the luck. I think you have full support of me. I talked to you about this many times. I would just also like to mention, because this is going to go public at some time, one of the things that would really help is if our golfers would even take care of these greens in this course the way they should be. For instance, I must fix at least 20 ballmarks on, on greens every time I play. And people simply don't fix divots and ballmarks. If you're not a golfer, you don't really care, you don't know what I'm talking about. But we do have it coming back in like it's coming back now, except for the landmines with the, with the- It, it, it just looks so bad when you can see the ballmarks and everything and people are not fixing their ballmarks. Because that greens are coming back, they are green, and I just encourage people to do that. So again, I, I thank you very much and I really appreciate the information you gave us.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. Yeah, have a good day.
Okay, we have one other item, discussion of COVID-19 precautions. Mr. Coffey, anything to bring up, go with it? It was brought up because, of course, we turn, we're going to fold into that the idea of going back to two riders per cart. It was brought up prior to this. The question was, could we put it on the agenda because of the Veterans Tournament coming up on the 15th, I believe it is? And of course, they wanted to know if we would change it, if we wanted to change that now, so they'd have time to prepare. Let's have a little discussion about that. I did talk to Bill a couple of times. As I said, I, I, I didn't really realize that before, but, you know, I said, do you plan on private carts in order to meet the carts you need for events like this? And he said, yes. And so it brings the use of, of a person's private cart back in. As I talked to him yesterday, he said he thought the afternoon was fine. He wasn't quite sure about the morning because it's a two shotgun start. Discussion, do we want to change this, go back to two rider carts? And, and I would just suggest to you that if we do, I would not vote for this unless a person, and I do not mean this political in any way, but I would not vote for this unless a person who is in his private cart would not be forced to drop, to ride with someone who is not vaccinated if they did not want to. And I would be one of those people. I've already done that with some of the players I play with, and there are a couple of people there that know they can't ride with me when we play now. It's just my own personal thing. And I'm saying that as a private card owner, you should have that, that right. So, comments, question. Mr. Grunel, this is because of your tournament, so-
Yeah, we met on Tuesday afternoon with Bill from the golf course. What we found was we went through the entire registration, and in the morning, they are counting on some of the folks bringing their private carts that have trail fees paid. So that was in the count. If we didn't use any private carts, then all of them won't have enough. The other thing that came up was, the recommendation was for one day, have a waiver of trail fees. So they would put it out on email that, bring your own cart if you wish. There was no discussion whatsoever of making people double up, but based on the registration, Bill said they're gonna double up anyway on their own. So there was no forced coupling, but they recommended having the opportunity. And Ernie's out there. Ernie could probably talk about that a little bit better.
And, and again, before Ernie gets up, you know, this has come up in discussion with many people, and people are not opposed to going back to two riders to a cart. And we all know that's the best thing for the course, it doesn't tear up the course as much. However, there are a lot, this is a COVID discussion right now too, which is part of this, and there are a lot of people out there who are saying, I wanna know who they're gonna put in my cart if we go back to two riders to a cart. And, and that's where it came up to me, that saying, you know, people have said, nobody's riding with me if they haven't been vaccinated. And so I, I need to throw that in. Go ahead, Ernie.
So two points with that. First and foremost, we have, this is an event that fills up, and we're gonna have a full field. Even in the afternoon, it'll eventually fill up this week. So we need, we need to have two people per cart. But more importantly, I understand all the COVID thing. I don't understand why the same people who complain about COVID will go sit in a closed poker room and play poker and all that and everything and do all those kind of things. But outside in the fresh air, we have to have our individual cart. But either way, the deadline for this is three days ahead of time. So it's not like we can't plan and schedule who can ride with who. We have ample time to be able to be prepared for the event. So if we do have that instance where you have somebody who, hey, I don't wanna ride with somebody who's not vaccinated, we have plenty of time to get to that.
And that's good. And, and again, in, in my case, you know, the four people I'm playing with that day, they're all, we're all gonna ride together, we're gonna double up. I'm just saying, there are some people out there and I, I, they have, I understand their concerns, and so we have to take that into concern, into-
And we will work with everybody, but I'm just letting you know, we have plenty of time to be able to hash out who, who's riding with who in that group. And most people, as you know, Chairman Mino, just like you did, they come up and they sign up as, hey, I'm playing with so and so, and they already know who they're playing with and who they're willing to ride with and all that.
That's what Bill said. Bill said that the foursomes are pretty much always together.
They always are.
They're all together.
But the question is, I know you did W, but the question is, if we do this, if we go to two rider cart, we're going back to two riders per cart from now on, aren't we? Is it just for this event or?
Just for this event.
Just this event we're doing?
If you're asking me, I'd rather it just be done.
That's why I understand, and that's what I'm saying.
Everywhere else you go, every other-
If this is just this event, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that, but I'm concerned that we turn this into a thing that's, okay, we're back to two riders per cart, and then people still during this COVID thing have to have the right to say, no, you got Joe Bowe over there and you're having him ride my cart, but I know he's not vaccinated. So I don't-
I think if we go back to two people per cart, I think it should be for this event only.
Okay, okay, that's, that's something different than I thought you were all talking about. So that, that's fine. I know you'd like to go back to two rider cart. We gotta look at it pretty soon, there's no question. But if we're just talking about this event, then it's not as much a concern of mine as it would be.
Well, if you're just gonna talk about this event, then the reason I had it put on the agenda was because if we were gonna go back to two riders per cart, we had to have it in enough time to do this Veterans Tournament, all right? I didn't know we were gonna split it, if that's what you're all talking about doing. You know, my, my reason for doing that is, is probably to me, time to put people back together. This has been going on for probably three months where all the other courses everywhere around here have all two riders to a cart. Many people that play at this course that insist on riding in their own cart don't have a problem getting in a car with two or three other guys, driving down to Sebastian, and everybody gets in the two riders to a cart. But here, they wanna drive in their own cart. So I think it's getting near time that we need to get rid of this and really bring it up. If you don't wanna do it today, if you wanna put you back to our regular meeting, we can also do that. But go ahead and decide what you wanna do about this coming event. Just like Ernie said, and most people do, they're signing up with somebody that they know that they wanna play with, and they're gonna be riding two to a cart anyway.
What if you just have a waiver for this event and then put it on your next meeting on the 14th?
If you can leave, just leave it on the agenda for the 14th, it's brought up, and then we'll have more discussion on it. Because this was just a special event, now we need it, you know, just another event.
Okay, if, can I have a motion to that effect? Because we, we, we wanna make sure we put this in so we don't lay it on other people, as I've said before. So if you would like to do, if you're gonna do that, the motion would, I would need a motion from someone saying that we go back to two riders per cart for the Veterans Tournament.
I move we go back to two people per cart for the Veterans Turn, Tournament and reevaluate on the 14th of January.
Do you second to that kind of motion? Does that help us enough, at least for the tournament? We'll have it on the, bring it up again on the 14th.
We, we will make happen whatever you wish for us to make happen.
Okay, any other comments, questions about that? Aloud in favor of the motion signifivers saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, motion adjourned. Anything else for the good of the, of order of the business here, of our business? None, I'd look for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Imus, second by Mr. Nugent, aloud in favor, say aye? We are adjourned.